I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 7th, 2020 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have two presentations tonight. First one, I'd like to invite Laura Swartz and Judge Bob O'Neil up. The Papillion 150 is now, 2020. So we've got an official proclamation we'd like to give, and if people are not aware, Judge had, I don't know, nine months ago, I think, was kind of the one of the impetus of getting the community groups together, said we need to be doing something, and went and started gathering people. And Papillion 150 is an actual organization made up of a lot of community people. Judge is the president, Laura's on the executive board along with two others, and so they're representing the executive board, and I'd like to give a proclamation. Whereas Papillion was founded in 1870 as a railroad town on the reunion Pacific Main Line, part of the transcontinental railroad, and Papillion continues to be a hub for connecting the world today through community partners such as Facebook and Google. And whereas Papillion's rich history and culture is worthy of celebration and appreciation by its residents. And whereas Papillion Sesquicentennial Celebration will be a year-long event filled with family-friendly activities, cityscape projects, butterfly benches, butterfly affleck murals, and butterfly gardens among others. And whereas Papillion's 150th Celebration will embody and enhance the community spirit that has resulted in a thriving city that maintains its small-town feel and close community bonds. And whereas the city of Papillion would like to welcome Papio Pete, the spokes butterfly for the Papillion 150 Celebration, who will be appearing as many Papillion 150 events.[142.19][142.19](APPLAUSE). Whereas Papillion 150 is a partnership between community leaders, the city of Papillion, and the Papillion Community Foundation honoring our journey and celebrating our wings. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the city of Papillion, do hereby proclaim the year of 2020 as Papillion 150. And Papillion, Nebraska, encourage the community to participate in the celebration throughout the year. Judge?[169.20][169.20](APPLAUSE).
Very briefly, we're really excited about all the things that are going to be coming up here during the 2020 celebration. Our first real event is going to be the Lions Club spaghetti feed, in which Papio Pete will be prominently displayed. It will also feature the Pac Band concert, in which there has been music commissioned by the Pac Band specifically for this event, along with some historical narration, so it'll be a really special event to occur, as well as the butterfly benches, which you've heard about, the murals, and the butterfly garden, which we hope will be at the Veterans Park. So there's lots of things coming in the next months. We're very excited about all of it, and we appreciate the support of the city and the Community Foundation, and particularly Laura, for all the things they've done to help make this happen. So, thank you.[230.12][230.12](APPLAUSE).
I'll just share too, if you've got anybody who comes and says, "Hey, I've got an idea," or "Why doesn't the city do this?" It's not a city event, it's a community-wide event, so I would encourage them to approach the 150 Committee with any ideas. And if an organization already has an event, and they just want to make it an official 150 event, they can reach to the committee and make that happen as well.[257.64][257.64](LAUGHTER). Speaking of animals, we also have another special presentation, and if there's no council objection, the next presentation is the retirement for K-9 Deuce. There's a related item, Item F3, that's related to this, just so Deuce doesn't have to wait around if he doesn't want to. If there's no objection, I'd like to move F3 up to after this presentation, so if there's no objection to that, we'll go ahead and do that as well. So for the presentation, Chief.
Tonight, we celebrate the retirement of a great cop, K-9 Deuce. On December 26th, 2019, Officer Chris Goley and his K-9 partner, Deuce, finished their last shift together. The truth is, is that Deuce served even our expectations. In 2018, we had a discussion with Officer Goley about how Deuce's performance was diminishing, and that we needed to think about replacing him, and so we ended up going out and finding a young pup that we're training named Trinity. To our surprise, that Deuce took it as competition, and it re-energized him, and he lasted almost another year and a half, and so... But sadly, it's time for Deuce to be retired, and so our intent is for him to live out his remaining years with Officer Goley, his companion. Deuce is a Belgian Malinois. He was born in Westerlo, Belgium, April 21st, 2008. He'll be 12-years-old this coming April. He was purchased by the Papillion Police Department in November 11th, 2009. He was put into service as a K-9 team with Officer Goley, his handler, about a year later, January 2010. He's certified as a dual-purpose police K-9, narcotics detection, marijuana, methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin. He's also a patrol dog, which means that he's been trained in officer protection, suspect apprehension, building and area searches, tracking, and he's served this community for 10 years, performing countless vehicle sniffs, detecting and removing narcotics from the streets, performing locker and vehicle sniffs within the schools and parking lots to deter drug use by our school-aged children. He's protected our officers and apprehended dangerous suspects, located lost children and vulnerable adults, and he's performed K-9 demonstrations at National Night Out celebrations for scout groups, senior citizen groups, Citizens Police Academy, and new officer recruit classes. In addition to serving the citizens of Papillion, K-9 Deuce has assisted outside agencies in Omaha, Council Bluff, Sarpy County, La Vista, Bellevue, Douglas County, the Nebraska State Highway Patrol, and the U.S. Marshal Service Fugitive Task Force. K-9 Deuce has tested his skills by competing in police K-9 competitions at the obedience and training center located in Topeka, Kansas. These competitions compare the skills of police K-9s with others across the... in states across the region, and K-9 Deuce has achieved the following awards for these competitions. In 2016, he was first place in the tough dog competition, first place in patrol dog competition, fourth place detector dog competition. In 2017, he was first place in the patrol dog competition, second place in the tough dog competition, and then 2018, when we thought his skills were diminishing, first place patrol dog competition, second tough dog competition, second place tracking competition, and third place detector dog competition. And this is a testament to what this dog has accomplished, because he's received excellent training and upkeep by his only handler, Officer Chris Goley. And so Deuce has had 661 street deployments in his career, and this is just a short summary of some of those things. Deuce has had his... has used his nose to locate everything from cocaine residue to 10 pounds of methamphetamine hidden in the backseat of a car. He's once tracked a murder suspect in a snowstorm to the spot in the creek where the suspect had thrown the murder weapon in. The revolver was later found recovered underwater in the creek right where he had tracked it to. His most remarkable patrol deployment was when he located a bank robbery suspect hiding in a... behind a baby crib mattress in the basement of an apartment building, and then once located, the suspect surrendered peacefully and was arrested without any incident. And so it is now that we recognize a truly special police K-9 who has served with distinction, won numerous awards, and this community and this police department says, "Well done, K-9 Deuce, faithful police servant." Thank you.[642.32][642.32](APPLAUSE).
Hopefully not here. I would like to take a moment to... to thank the city for all of your support to the K-9 program, and also to my fellow officers who are standing behind me. K-9 has definitely been part of our family, and it's... tonight is bittersweet for us to say goodbye to him. Most importantly, though, Chief talked about a lot of awards and a lot of accomplishments, some great finds on the street, and that's testament to our training group. Deuce would not be the dog that he is... that he has been for many years if it weren't for the assistance of some of the handlers that are in this room behind me. It's only with their help and support and assistance that we're able to hone Deuce's skills, so thanks to all.[721.13][721.13](APPLAUSE).
I would like to go ahead and move Item F3 up to the agenda, Item F... if there's no objection. Item F3, Resolution R200006. A resolution to approve a bill of sale transferring retired police K-9 unit dog Deuce from the city of Papillion to Papillion Police Officer Christopher Goley. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200006?
Oh.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents besides everybody behind me? Do we have any opponents? You gotta walk by the dog if you are...[761.44][761.44](LAUGHTER). Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you.[776.19][776.19](APPLAUSE).
Those are some tough acts to follow, so mine will be a little more mundane, but just an update on the resolution that you passed in December... on December 3rd relative to our boundary agreement with the city of Gretna. We've received a copy of the ordinance that the city of Gretna intends to introduce tonight at their city council meeting, which will take outside of their city limits, the east side of the interstate near 192nd Street. So this would be consistent with our boundary agreement. Also, the Gretna Planning Commission is scheduled to consider a comp plan amendment consistent with the boundary agreement on January 14th. So we will continue to monitor those two items and keep you apprised of that. If you have any questions, please let me know. And then lastly, our council retreat planning session, it is scheduled for Thursday, January 16th, beginning at 8:30 a.m. at the Natural Resource Center at Chalko Hills. And also, please, don't forget to fill out your SWOT analysis if you have not already. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is consent. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F1, Ordinance 1865. An ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code 3526D to increase the amount allowed each year for the annual employee recognition dinner to $50 per elected official and employee. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1865?
No.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R20003. A resolution to grant consent to the resettlement of refugees within the city of Papillion pursuant to Presidential Executive Order Number 13888. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R20003? Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody neutral? Council discussion? Mr. Gaines?
Can you tell me what the city's... I understand the executive order, but the city's policy in the past, have we done any studies on safety, or are there any national studies on safety of accepting these refugees into our community? And is there a limit? I guess just some more further explanation of what we're voting to approve tonight?
I think I'll look to... Where did he go? Chief Lyons.
He's out there, isn't he?
Because he's got some of that info. And in the meantime, we'll get Chief Lyons, because he's got some of that info, and in the meantime, I think Amber gives some general information, and then when Chief comes in, we'll go more specific.
Thank you.
So generally, this... so Lutheran Social Services has identified that there's at least one refugee somewhere in another country that has said that they have immediate family that lives here in Papillion. I don't have the exact number. They don't have the exact number of how many, just at least one. And by allowing this... to go through this consent, this would allow that refugee, if they choose to move to Papillion, to get grant money to help them to resettle.
One of the other items, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Lyons. If we approve this, then we are aware when that refugee comes, so that does play a little bit to the safety. If we do not approve it, that doesn't mean... that doesn't mean they don't come. Refugee needs to come to a community, I think they call it the primary city, and the primary one is the one that's approved it, but once they're in the U.S. and resettled, they are free to go anywhere they want, so what this allows is us to be a primary city so that, like, that one individual could come here. We're now aware of that individual. We're made aware of it, but if we don't approve it, they could still go to another city and then relocate here, and we would not be aware of that. But Chief, question was impacts on public safety and those types of things.
This entire process is a refugee process, which is totally different than a immigration status type of process. And so these individuals have been vetted very, very thoroughly. The process, it takes... it takes a long time to go through it. There's many steps, and these individuals are identifying people most likely that in the communities that they put down as preferential treatment that they're moving in with is probably family or extended family to them. And so as far as safety, these would... these individuals would be among those people that would be the safest, you know, to be considered for immigration and/or naturalization into the country. And then from what we... when we sat and listened to the presentation, these individuals are usually find employment through the help of organization within a month, 30, 60 days, they find them and start the process of assimilation, and so the success rate was above 90 percent, and so it was something that I feel very comfortable with.
Mr. Sunday.
First of all, I do not recall seeing this on... as an agenda item, first reading or second reading. Did I just miss it?
Resolutions only require one. Ordinances require three.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
From what I understand, this entire refugee process has been... over the years, has been fraught with fraud. These... a lot of the purported refugees know what they're supposed to say. I have concerns myself. I know that there's been instances where known terrorists are allowed to settle in communities here in this country, and later their fingerprints were found to match up with bombs that were made over in Iraq. And so it's not foolproof, is all I'm saying. Everybody should understand that. And I do understand that we're a Christian nation, despite what Obama says, and we have charity in our hearts, and we want to welcome refugees whenever possible, but I do think that we should do that with eyes wide open.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Well, I just wanted to point out that something that I... that I found as I looked into this further, this isn't a sanctuary-city situation, and first reaction is, that's what it is, but it is not. Really, the only difference is, unless Amber or the Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, is the same refugee can locate Papillion whether we pass this or not. The difference is, we'll know they're here, and it'll enable them to apply for... with, like, say Lutheran Family Services or whatever agency will allow them to make application for a grant... better way to put it than that, but a grant assist in housing and job training and so forth. So by passing it, we're not encouraging 2,000 people to show up tomorrow. They do have extended family or immediate family situation to go to, and as I said, they would come here anyway, whether we pass this or not. This gives us some measure of... "cover" is not the right word, but of knowledge about who is here and their process as they go through it.
Mr. Glover.
Are there any timelines or guidelines on how long they have to stay in the community before they move on?
Do you know, Chief?
We were told during the conference call that the normal process, it would be that 30, 90-day window, and then after that, it's like... it would be contact as needed. But at any point in the process, they could decide to relocate, and they're in the United States, they're freely able to move about wherever they want and relocate on their own at that point.
And then does somebody track them, then? Like, if they move out of the community? Are they tracked through the refugee organization, or...
I don't believe that the organizations are pinned down in specific communities, like Lutheran Family Services would be a little more local version, but in another state, it would be an entirely different organization. I don't know what the communication process is between them, but they would have to maintain contact with the... possibly through immigration, knowing, you know, where they could contact them if need be. That would be probably where you would find that information.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines.
Okay, just for clarification, does this put us on some sort of preferred list for refugee resettlement, or are there qualifications? Do they have to have immediate family members, or... you know, one of my concerns, if you look at the handout that's at our desk, three of the countries that are on this... the highest number of refugees are Iraq, Somalia, and Syria. And while I understand there's a vetting process, and that was a question I was going to ask regardless, but these countries have different standards of living, they have different morality, they have different... totally different. And what I'm trying not to do is not to exclude somebody who desperately needs to come to the United States, and they have family here. I'm trying to make sure that we don't become a hotbed of refugees, you know, and therefore one person moves here, and then their relatives come over on a passport, and I just, you know, and some other council members, the comments have been made that, well, they can come here regardless. They can come here regardless if they move from point A to point B, but we're directly placing these people into Papillion. Do we get on... is there a preferred list? Do we become an addjective? Or do we become... I just want to know what the qualifications are to be relocated or located in one of the cities like this.
My understanding of the presidential order is the state must approve, so the states that say yes are on an... on an approved list, and Governor Ricketts did do that just before Christmas, and so Nebraska's already on an approved list. And then the second step of that is the local jurisdiction needs to say yes, and I know Omaha, Lincoln, La Vista, I believe Bellevue, I don't know, the outstate ones, I believe, have already approved it. Sarpy County had it on their agenda, and I... my understanding is they tabled it, they wanted some more answers. I'm not aware of any Nebraska city that has taken it up that has denied it, but yes, the ones that approve it are on approved list. Chief?
Just in my research on this issue, in 2018, there was only 29,000-plus refugees that were brought into the United States through this program, so this isn't a program where, you know, you have hundreds of thousands of people. It was only 29,000 plus some change. The other thing was, is that when a... when a state is approved or consent, and a city consents, the person is placed there, they receive grant... access to grant monies. It is not them that get the grant monies, it's the organizations that assimilate them, but once they relocate, they... and go to a place that is not... has not approved to participate in the process, they lose those grant funds. And so their best case for being... being able to assimilate, to be able to get a job, to become a productive member of society is based upon their ability to be helped by an organization, and that is tied to a state and the city location approving it.
In 2018, in Nebraska, there were 262. Don't know where, how that would divide it out, but it was 262. Mr. Sunday.
So these organizations have a financial interest in bringing someone here? Is that what you're saying, Chief?
Yes, like Lutheran Family Services, their entire program is to help.
Well, I have to admit that I share some of the concerns of Councilperson Gaines. We've got, you know, the bulk of... the percentages of refugees in past years coming from nations that are known terrorist hotbeds, and then we've got a charitable organization set up that actually, we've created a financial incentive for them to bring more. That doesn't make sense to me, and I... what's in it for the community, the members of this community? I don't know.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious, if this is approved tonight, what additional role does the city of Papillion have relative to working with Lutheran Family Services or working with this particular individual? Who applies for the grant funding? How does all of that work?
I'll have Chief confirm it, but my understanding is, we have no further role. Lutheran Family Services is the recognized refugee agency in this region, and so they have all of the work. What it does just... does is allow them, if they've got a refugee and their family's in Papillion, they can relocate them here. Absent that, I don't think we have any role at all. If we do pass it and Lutheran Family Services relocates somebody here, then I... we are made aware of that individual. I think it's through the police department, they actually become aware that that individual's here. If we deny it, we still don't have any other responsibilities, just when they do move here, we just wouldn't know it. But we don't have any responsibility one way or the other. Is that true, right, Chief? Okay. Any other council discussion? Mr. Gaines?
I just want to make one final comment. I... I'm just not... if somebody wanted to make a motion to table this item, I'd be more than willing to educate myself and consider this, but at this point in time, I'm not comfortable that I have the knowledge to vote for this tonight, so that's just kind of where I sit, but I just want to say that publicly. I'm just... I'm looking out for the interests of the citizens of Papillion and our safety, and I'm just... I don't have the educational background to vote yes in favor of this tonight.
Okay, we have another council member want to speak, and then we'll come back to that. Mr. Jaworski.
Well, I guess if I'm understanding this right, if we pass this, we know they're coming. If we don't pass this, they're still coming, and we don't know they're coming, right? Am I right when I say that?
Correct. No, they wouldn't come here as the initial site. They would come somewhere else, and then migrate... they could migrate here. But you're right, we wouldn't know.
Okay, thanks.
There's no other council discussion. Did you want to make that a formal motion, or did you want to put it up for a vote? Looked to you for direction.
I'll leave that up to other council members.
Okay.
So...
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. There's no other council discussion, so unless there is another motion, we'll go ahead and take a vote, so just kind of look, is anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Gaines brought up the idea of tabling if more information... Mr. Gaines brought up the idea of tabling if more information is required. But if you don't need more and we're ready to vote, we can go ahead and vote, so. Please, pardon? Okay, uh, please vote.
Four yeas, two nays by Sunday and Gaines.
Motion fails. Next is item F4. Resolution R-200007. A resolution to approve overnight camping of Boy Scouts at the city of Papillion Wellfield on January 17th and 18th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-200007? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R-200008. A resolution to approve the consultant services agreement for MPDES MS4 discharge permits, stormwater, public education, and outreach between the city of Papillion, city of La Vista, and Civic, Nebraska. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-200008? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Sunday. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports. Public Safety met. Do we have a report from there?
Yes, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met tonight and we dealt with multiple issues. The first issue was the mobile food vendors and the level of safety on South Washington Street. Several different things were talked about. There were different examples of how these, these trucks are sticking out into traffic, how they force traffic into the other lanes. And so there was a motion inside of the committee to recommend that the city make a policy that restricts mobile food vendors on South Washington between First and Second unless the road is closed for special events. So the city is putting that together and that'll be forwarded to the, to the full council. The second issue, we discussed a, a policy on speed limit and how we set that policy. I know that the Public Safety Committee addressed an issue on 96th Street a few months back. And the city has requested that we have a formal policy to, to change speed limits. So we're going to work on that. And the final issue that we discussed was a property maintenance code. And there was lots of discussion on what this may or may not be. One of the things, especially my concern, was not micromanaging people's property, not, you know, telling people what they can and can't have on their property and making sure that we focus on public safety. If something on somebody's property poses a safety risk, those are the type of things that we're going to focus on. And I think that this has been worked on since 2008? Is that, 2007? So this is going to be a long process, but I, I think that my goal personally would like to maybe either have something or not by the end of this year. So I think it's going to call for several more Public Safety Committee meetings throughout the year. Other than that, that's all we discuss.
Thank you very much. I don't believe any other committees have met. We'll do comments from the floor and then we'll do council comments. Any comments from the floor? Students get to come up and introduce yourself and let us know why you're here and we'll wait. So go ahead and come on up.
Hi, I'm Nick Bianchi. I'm with Papillion South Government Class and we're here to do a paper that's due on Friday about the committee and council meetings.
Thanks for all you're doing too. If people aren't aware, Nick has his own business, Bianchi Candle. And it's actually moved out of his house and it's actually leasing one of the downtown Papillion Main Street businesses. So does production and retail and everything else, so big entrepreneur. So thank you very much for everything you're doing. Congrats.
I am Josh Criswicki. I'm here with my friend Nick Bianchi and I'm also a student at Papio Sap.
Thank you very much. I don't think any other committees met. No other comments from the floor. Council comments. Mr. Sunday.
I just had a quick correction to something councilperson Gaines said. The proposed ordinance amendment would limit all mobile vendors between First and Second Street on Washington. Wouldn't be limited to just food vendors.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, the item that we approved, four to two, you had indicated in your comments, I'm assuming the minutes will reflect that we passed it and it didn't fail, correct?
Did I say pass?
You said failed.
It failed.
The motion to approve, right, the resettlement?
It was a motion to approve.
Right.
It was a four-two vote, which, you know, look to Robert's rule. I believe it is a majority of the full council, not the majority of those present.
Ah, gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good clarification though. And that is correct, right? Majority of the full council. Okay, thank you. Few updates from the last couple of weeks. Had some DARE graduations. It's always good to see those. And we've had some ribbon cuttings. We've had a number of ribbon cuttings. Also had a meeting with Mr. Thielen. Mr. Sturzmann and I had a meeting with Planning and Legal at the city of Omaha regarding a program called PACE. It's about energy efficiency that the state has enabled. Omaha and Lincoln have passed legislation to authorize it. I believe La Vista has as well. And we're investigating that. And if we do it, there's a lot of administrative issues related to it. And so we're talking to the city of Omaha about maybe administering it on our behalf through and in our local agreement, kind of like we do with the stormwater management. A lot of complexities to it and it's not something we would do a lot. So it doesn't make sense to probably build the expertise here. So good meeting with the city of Omaha and thank Mr. Thielen for setting that up. Papillion Volunteer Fire Department Inc. also had an annual dinner, went and visited with them. One note, at your desk are the new committee assignments, but I made an error, so rip that up. And I'll rehand it out at the next meeting. I think I've got a couple of council members listed three times and each person should only be on two committees. So I gotta go back and rework that, so. Those of you that have reached out to me and said your preference, I tried to honor all of those. But I will go back and work it. So rip that up and you'll see it at the next meeting. I believe that is all. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote. Mr. Glover.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.